I declare the regular city council meeting, excuse me, for May 11th, 2015 in order. The first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll approve the agenda. Lori, any changes? We have a motion, please, to approve the agenda as presented.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We've approved the agenda. The public announcements, did you want to go through any of the public announcements?
I can just real quick note that the Victoria for a Lifetime Committee would like to invite everyone to a Hospice 101 Community Chat. It's free, it's this Thursday from 2:30 to 4 o'clock at the Victoria Rec Center. And Discover Victoria Day is coming up on Saturday, May 16th. Ben, did you want to highlight a few of the things going on at Discover Victoria Day?
Doors will open at 10:00 a.m. For people to come in, we have a number of vendors that will be, call them vendors businesses and people that have services here in Victoria, just highlighting what they provide and giving opportunity to kind of meet and greet until 2:00 p.m. We have, Party Pizza will be served at 12 o'clock and we have a number of other activities going on throughout the day to make it a fun event for everyone.
And there's stuff for kids.
Absolutely.
Robotics, demonstration and pickleball and skating club, there's a lot more additions than there used to be, so, very cool.
Thank you, Ben.
Sure.
Next, we'll adopt the agenda. We've done that. The open forum, it's an opportunity for, excuse me, residents to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. We'd ask you to limit your comments to five minutes. Anybody wish to address the council? Seeing none, we'll go to the visitors' presentation. I see Andrew Hager is here. Andrew, the floor is yours.
Well, good evening. Liz is joining me as well, but tonight we're here to give a brief presentation on an activity we participated in on April 29th at Holy Family Catholic High School. I'll run through some pictures here about the event as we go, but what this was, was a mock car crash. Like I said, it was at Holy Family High School and what the goal of this was, is to teach the students the dangers of impaired driving or intoxicated driving, texting while driving, that kind of stuff. So, several agencies participated in this. Liz set the vast majority of this up and really did a ton of legwork putting this together, so, we were able to kind of show up and put on a show for the kids to kind of show them what the consequences of something like this can be, so. Hold on, try to get through some of these pictures.
Is it on?
No. I'll let you scroll through some of them. Now, a couple of these look a little graphic, but just keep in mind, this is all makeup and moulage that one of the paramedics actually did. So, there was two vehicles staged in the parking lot, they were basically set up that it looked like a head-on crash, we had multiple victims. One of the, one of the students played an impaired driver and basically this crash was a result of his actions and then basically got to show the students the consequences of what happens on a crash scene like this and how people go about being removed from the vehicles, put into ambulances. In this case, we were able to have a helicopter come in, which we'll get to in a few minutes That victim was loaded onto the helicopter and actually flown from the scene, so that's something we don't see here real often, a helicopter dropping in. State Patrol also participated and helped do some of the field sobriety exercises and stuff like that, so. We felt this was very beneficial, not only to the student body, but also to the public safety agencies involved. This was probably one of the most realistic scenarios that we can put our people through. The students did an awesome job playing the role of victims as part of this, so that really helped kind of sell it to the folks that, you know, this is a real situation and, like I said, it's not something we can really simulate on our normal training, so. In addition to the crash scenario, we had, the sheriff came and gave a speech and kind of had some of the statistics about what happens, stuff like that, and then also the students heard from a local community member who lost a family member to impaired driving, so that really kind of struck home, so. That's kind of it, must be anything to add?
Andrew, this was at Holy Family?
Correct.
Any, Chaska Chan Hessen High School, is there any opportunity to do more, or is it?
Chaska High School was doing it for a while, I'm not sure if they still are.
I'm not sure either. Chan Hessen I know wants to do it as well, so.
This was a first for us to be able to do something like this.
If you haven't sat through one of these, these are pretty impressive.
Yeah.
A little feedback for you, my daughters were there and this was just before their prom and they felt it was very impactful.
Good.
And that the kids, they were impressed with how seriously they took it. It wasn't just, no, we got to go sit through this thing, it was, they really took it very seriously, so.
Good to hear.
Well done.
Thank you. So, we're estimating we hit 400-plus students that day, we were able to show them.
That's a good number.
Yeah, and you raised an important point, Councilmember Striegel. Corporal Groenhagen went back to Holy Family and did kind of a debriefing session to try to understand what more information could we provide to the students to help this really be meaningful and change behavior and how did it impact them. I wanted to make sure to have the chief and Corporal Groenhagen here because this took a lot of work to put on. A number of agencies donated their time and resources, many of our fire department members arranged to have the day off or take vacation so that they could participate and one of the things they shared with me is not all communities are able to sustain putting on this kind of event because it takes so many resources. So, it was great that when Liz went out, she heard from the students and from the teachers that this really did mean something and would hopefully change future behavior.
Thank you. Other questions or comments for Liz or Andrew?
I'd just like to add thank you to Ann, she was the one that was able to take all these pictures for us, so it really helped, so.
I thought you were going to say she flew the helicopter.
Hats off to you, this was really fabulous, thank you for doing this and all the time. Please thank your team, too.
Will do.
Thank you both. Next, we'll move to the consent agenda where all items are, under the consent agenda are approved with one motion unless anybody on the council wishes to remove an item.
I'd like to remove item A, please.
Anyone else? Can I have a motion, please, to approve the amended consent agenda?
I move that we approve the amended consent agenda, removing item A.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We've adopted the amended, we've approved the amended consent agenda. Jim, minutes for the April 27th, 2015 city council meeting.
Under item three in the open forum, there's a statement, Councilmember Crowley noted the time limit policy, it's incorrect. How would I phrase that? Councilmember Crowley noted, through a point of order, noted a deviation from the topic submitted by the citizen and requested a halt. And with that change, I move we approve the amendments from the April 27th meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We've approved the minutes for that meeting. We'll move to, excuse me, donations. Someone want to make a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 15-30, accepting donations in the following amounts, from an anonymous donor, $1,000 designated for concerts in the park, from the Social Ice Cream Parlor, $100 dedicated to T-Ball and Coach Pitch, and from School of the Wise, also $100 to T-Ball and Coach Pitch. I move that we approve those, accept those donations with gratitude.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We've approved, accepted the donations. We move to unfinished business, the next steps with the community event center proposal.
At our April 11th work session, we met with members from the Victoria Lions to begin to discuss a proposal for a community event center. As most people are aware, the Victoria Lions have met at the old City Hall building historically and will continue to meet there through May and then that building is scheduled to be demolished this summer. The Lions have made some provisions to meet at St. Victoria over the next year, but are looking to find a permanent home in the community that will accommodate their monthly meetings and their fundraisers, their pancake breakfast and other community events. A group, I think we call it the Building Committee, has done a fair amount of work in looking into a possibility of building a community event center. Right now, the location that they're looking at is at Lyons Park, although as we've been working through this, I think the location is less important at this point than the concept of the event center. And so, as I said, we talked about this at our April 11th work session, we had just about an hour to begin to understand the proposal and not a lot of time to get into in-depth questions or next steps forward. And so, tonight, wanted to revisit the topic and look for direction on several items that are outlined in the agenda statement. I'll go through those, but first I will note that two members of the Building Committee, Dave Lura and Chuck Freiberg, are here to respond to questions. Should we want to move forward in investigating the viability of a community event center? A couple of things that we see from staff perspective as good next steps. First would be to set a date for a neighborhood meeting. If we are going to look at Lyons Park as a potential proposal, following what we do in other development scenarios, we usually have a neighborhood meeting fairly early on in the process to let people know what's being proposed and how they can be involved in the process if they wish to. Secondly, second and third really, one of the components that we discussed to funding a community event center and just attempt to summarize, the proposal before us that we talked about on April 11th was that the city, in cooperation with the Lions, would apply for $500,000 from the state capital budget, commonly known as the bonding bill. The Lions would contribute $250,000 over some course of time, five or 10 years, and the additional $250,000 would be financed through revenues from the facility with this. So, in short, bonding bill $500,000, city finances the remaining $450,000 to $500,000 with the Lions contributing half of that over time and the other half coming from event center revenues. In order for that to move forward, the bonding bill process begins in June. The city council would need to submit a resolution of support by June 12th and so that would kind of mean for us is our June 8th meeting to include the request information in the packet that will make its way to the legislature in January of next year. That's item three, backing up to item two, if we wish to go forward with further consideration of the bonding bill. Both the Building Committee and staff see the next step in that as having legislative information in session. Members of the Building Committee have met individually with legislators and that's actually where the idea of applying to the capital fund was generated, but what we'd like to do is get everybody in the same room and really make sure we understand the process, the issues that would need to be worked out, the feasibility of getting this kind of funding. As staff, we don't want to go forward with any of this until we've had a chance. As I said, when we talked about this at the work session, there wasn't a lot of time for questions, either for staff or for the Building Committee. Wanted to bring it back to you tonight to continue that discussion.
Would you expand on the capital bonding, the half a million dollars and what commitment, if any, we'd have to be making in another month?
Sure. The way that the process works is that there is an administrative side of the approval process that runs through, what's the Office of Management and Budget at the state level? Can't remember their acronym.
O and B.
O and B, yes, thank you. So, the applications for all local government requests are due to that agency in June, but they won't really, they will do some work on their end, refining and asking questions, but the real process for considering the bonding bill begins with the legislative session next year. I have not been terribly involved in the bonding bill process, but Al Orson, who's a member of the Building Committee, has been obtaining information about what that application would look like and the process that we need to go through. What I do know at this point is we would need to submit a resolution and then I would not expect much would happen between June and January and so, what could happen is the council could submit a resolution of support in June, we could continue to work on this proposal, other alternatives, and if we get to November and we've come up with something different or better or whatnot, we could pull back that resolution before it's fully considered at the legislative level. If we don't submit a resolution in the June application, it makes it much more difficult to be considered come next January, February, March, and then we'd be looking, typically a bonding bill is done only every other year, so we'd be looking at the 2018 capital budget.
Does the request for the bonding have to be site-specific?
I wish I knew for sure the answer to that question. I think that it does, but I think we would have the opportunity to refine the site between June and January, February timeframe. I think once we get to the spring legislative session, we will need to understand exactly where we see the project going forward.
For clarification's sake, the Building Committee, this is strictly Lions Club members?
Correct.
And to date, the involvement of the staff and the city has been informational only or has there been any contribution to the project? And I'd say that, meaning staff time, et cetera.
Sure. We've met with the Building Committee six or seven times and gone through the scenarios that you saw last week, asking questions about how it might work, providing staff insight, but we haven't spent any, outside of staff time, we haven't engaged with any consultants or done any site work to move the project forward.
But you have had some conversations, at least internally, about alternatives if this wouldn't, this wouldn't work?
Yes. One of the things that we've talked about internally is that it's, the Lions are an important part of the community and as staff, we really would like to see them have a home somewhere. So, there are a few other projects that get floated and I think it's fair to say we're constantly trying to figure out, oh, would this be a good partnership for the Lions? I don't have anything at this moment that I can say is the perfect partnership, but that's something that we're consistently thinking about.
You want to talk a little bit about the financial package that you put in front of us?
Sure. It was not in the packet because it was just generated between Friday and today, but I can make it available on the website and I handed the Building Committee copies of it. We ran through a few scenarios. At the April 11th work session, the Lions presented some financial information, that they did a fair amount of work to try to understand what the costs and revenues associated with the facility might be. The Building Committee met with a number of local caterers to try to, local caterers and other wedding and event venues to understand what demand for a facility like this might be and what they could expect for rental income as well as operating expenses and they presented a scenario under which, as I said in the beginning, if we achieved a $500,000 revenue from the bonding bill, a contribution from the Lions totaling $250,000, the way we saw it structured at the April 11th work session would be $50,000 over five years and then an additional $200,000 to be financed, or sorry, $450,000 to be financed by the city but paid back, the $200,000 would be paid back by revenue generated from the center. And so, we ran through a couple, five scenarios where we looked at some of the questions that were raised at that April 11th work session. So, the first sheet in this packet, which like I said, I'll make available online, is the scenario as presented by the Lions with just one modification, we increased the expense for an event center manager to $50,000. We talked a little bit about what it'll take to make the revenue projections and to make this center successful and that was one recommendation that we had from a staff perspective to increase that number. The next sheets, and I'm not going to go through these, I realize not everyone has them in front of them or wants to digest or Excel spreadsheets, but we went through a scenario where the Lions would only contribute $50,000 and for some reason would not be able to contribute in future years, whether that's a change in state law, a change in attitudes about pull tabs, I won't venture what that would be, but we ran through that scenario. We ran through what it would look like if the Lions' contribution came in over 10 years instead of five years, again, because of sensitivities in pull, charitable gambling revenue. And we looked at what would happen if the revenue for the event center was at 50% of what was forecast in that original projection. And essentially, what we see is, what you saw on April 11th showed that the event center could make its payments if the event income and the contributions come in as outlined. What we find when we get into the additional scenarios is that we may be in a position where the event center requires some kind of a subsidy to be operated. So, what we take away from that is, if this is a project that we want to undertake, we need to understand probably a little bit better how realistic the rental income numbers that we're using to go forward and make this kind of investment are. One of the things that we could do would be to ask the Lions to engage a consultant that would be accustomed to doing this kind of feasibility study. Like I said, the Building Committee met with a number of local caterers and I think did the legwork that it's possible to do as a committee, but one of the recommendations might be to take that a step further and really understand the market. One of the statements that we talked about last time is that the event revenue here could be conservative. Some of the local people that, the local caterers that we talked to said, you could have an event in there every Friday, Saturday, Sunday, all year long, there's just that much unmet demand in the metro. Looking further in the numbers, we're just suggesting that maybe we take that one step further and make sure we understand what our risk is, what that revenue sensitivity is.
At the end of the day, that revenue stream is vital. I mean, this project, from a financial point of view, sinks or swims on the basis of that, those revenue projections. Well, then the new news is your suggestion that there'd be a consultant involved that would opine on the reality of the revenue stream?
Yes.
And then we would need time to understand the impacts.
I'm further suggesting, we won't be able to achieve a feasibility study, I'm suggesting that for the first time this evening after getting into these numbers today, so we'll need to talk with the Lions about their interest in doing that. I'm also suggesting that we would continue particularly on the bonding bill front. If we want to be included in that process, we do need to submit that resolution of support by June 12th. Submitting that resolution, and we'll obviously talk about the resolution a month from now at the June 8th meeting, I'm not asking you to support that tonight, but I'm suggesting that we could dual-track both of those so that that remains an option for us and we don't delay it until 2018.
And for clarity, again, the, supporting the resolution doesn't commit us to doing the project in the event that we're awarded the bond, it just puts us in queue that we have the right of refusal on it.
Right, and I would anticipate that we would know even prior to award of the bond where we're at with the project.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
So, just for clarification, why would we ask for money from the state legislature if we're not ready to commit our funds as well?
I guess from my point of view, it's a chicken and an egg. Without the 500, interest gets a lot more difficult to sustain with the 500 and makes the project at least eminently doable.
I believe it's also purely a timing issue. If we were having this conversation six months ago, we'd have plenty of time and discussion even prior to turning anything in.
I guess from my perspective, it's a non-starter without the bond, so if we don't put ourselves in a position to achieve that, I don't see how it has a chance.
But if we do get the money, we've got to step up and...
No, if we get approved, we, Lori, based on the work you've done so far, it sounds like there's a little bit of clarity that's lacking, but your understanding is, we get in the queue, we're awarded, we don't have to accept, we can punt the project.
Right, but my hope really would be that we would know, we're going to submit the application, do some of the administrative work, but before we get to the legislative session in the spring, then we are out actively campaigning, all of us that we know with more certainty where we are on the project.
Yeah, we have a report from, again, assuming the Lions agree, we'd have a report from a consultant that opines on the appropriateness of the revenue stream and we'd know that, as Tom pointed out, if there's a half a million from the legislature, it becomes one kind of a deal. If it doesn't, then we have to look at, and we will and you are committing to look at other alternatives, but right now, in first place, I would assume in the horse races, the bonding from the state along with an appropriate revenue stream that's verified, to the extent a consultant can do that, would give us some assurance.
I would think the other thing, too, is the conversation with the neighborhoods and location, you know, is this the right location? Is there even an alternative if this should not be the right location for whatever reason? And we've yet to have those conversations, so I think that needs to happen as well to better understand where we are. So, I agree, it's the location, it is the revenue stream because that is really key for the future part of this and then, obviously, because of timing, we have to move on the bonding piece regardless of having all those answered.
And so, we can, we're obligated to apply roughly within about the next 30 days, but we have the ability to withdraw as we go through the process internally, no harm, no foul, up until six months or more later?
That's my understanding.
And we ought to be a lot smarter about this project in the next three to six months.
Is Emma the mindset that the proposal by the Lions merits further investigation and a plan put forth by our city manager gives us the opportunity to understand in detail the options available to us so that we can make an informed decision and I have to support her recommendations?
Anybody else?
I just want to make the comment that as it stands right now, I guess I'd be pretty uncomfortable moving forward with a project like this, I just think, I don't know if the City of Victoria staff needs to be managing an event center and that's not putting down the Lions Club and all the good work they do, but I'd rather see our staff worried about, you know, roads and, you know, the essential services and there's quite a bit of risk here, you know, to the taxpayers. If revenues don't come in, I just don't know if it's wise. So, I guess I'd be pretty, I need a lot of convincing to, for me to move forward.
No, done? Lonnie?
I guess I would say, I agree with Mr. Crowley that we need to continue the research on the project. I don't disagree that the concern is over the revenue long-term and ability to do that and have staff manage that process because I know this can be a difficult business to be in, but we don't know all the answers yet and so I agree with Mr. Crowley that we should take the recommendation given by the city manager and move forward to better understand the project and the possibilities and while we're at it, we might as well start the funding process through the bonding, bonding process, sorry, in, again, in case we are ready to go when it's time.
Well, Tom?
Actually, did have one other question and this is maybe a little bit down into the details, but, you know, in the event that we, you know, everything looked good and we moved forward... and we moved forward, but then change of economics or whatever, the project didn't perform, is there a way to design it in such that, you know, preserving the Lions Club's access to the facility, but that it could be sold to a private party?
Well, to the extent we try to make it as a general purpose as possible, but at the end of the day, it starts to look and function like an event center.
You know, I, I think the Lions, one of the things the Lions would...
Dave, you want to come on up and talk into the mic?
I think it's important for the Lions that at least whatever we're building here doesn't get sold to a private entity, and the reason why, and if it has to, I understand that, but the reason why is we want this for the community, and if it goes to a private industry, it no longer, it shuts that door for the whole, all the residents in Victoria. So I'd, I'd have a little concern with it, I think most of Lions would too, but I'd have to go back to them on that.
And I would guess that if you use state money to build a public building, and then you sold it, you'd have to give the state money back to the state.
If we get state money for this, this is a pretty good deal for the residents of Victoria. I mean, the Lions are going to give 250, we're going to, we're going to fund three-quarters of this project, and now we're at risk, what we're dealing with at risk is 25% of it. And with an event manager in there, I think that reduces that risk quite a bit. And we got someone in there marketing that place, we got, if they're working 40 hours a week trying to get people in there and that's what that $50,000 is going for, that's a pretty good chunk of change to get people into a building. So I think the risk is, the risk is there, I won't, yep, but it's minimized with, with a plan like that.
Can I just ask a couple of follow-up questions? So I, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, but at your last presentation, you said that you guys raised about $28,000 a year?
Correct. No, that, no, that's what we donate to the community.
So the, so the $50,000 a year, you guys are comfortable that you can cover that?
Yes.
No problem?
That, the 50,000 and, and still include the 28.5 for what we told, what we currently are donating to the community.
Okay, thank you.
And for the record, I agree with Jim and Lonnie and Tom and I think, I think Joe, but at least the others, that this is too important not to, to be cavalier about and to just not take it as far as we could possibly take it. I mean, you guys, and it, it may sound to you all that we're not appreciative of the work that's been done, there's since some darn good work done. I think we're at the point now where dotting some i's and crossing some t's and trying to deal with the timing impacts, but I think you've advanced the ball a considerable way.
Yeah, I think it's important for us to do due diligence to make sure this thing is going to work. I think what we're doing here is good.
And I'll, I'll take it a step further and state that had, the work that you have done puts us in a position of taking it forward from a point of seriousness, that you have something that merits further attention and we want to investigate it further, at least speaking for myself.
In fact, had you not done that work, we'd be nowhere, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for the work you've done, and we'll, we have more roads to cross.
Well, good, thanks for the opportunity.
Yeah, Dave.
Thank you.
Can I have one more?
You sure can.
Thank you. So have we looked at other options besides a center that, you know, where we actually have to, you know, make money at? Is there, can we put on a $250,000 addition onto the rec center, or is there something where we can just...
Yeah, there's, there are, there are, I can think of at least three options, or four options that we've talked about, and some of you are probably not ready to talk about publicly, but there are other options. Should this, should this not work, there are other options to make, meet the Lions' needs as we understand them. Laurie, do you want to? The answer is no, she doesn't want to. In fairness, there's some balls that are in the air and it's not appropriate yet to talk about.
Yeah, I, I think just back to my earlier statement that we've taken from the council and we as staff, we want the Lions to find a permanent home, and there are a number of times that we are meeting with people and thinking, is there any way that we can network these two opportunities together? But they're all at such beginning stages and without knowing if any of those are going to work out, the Lions have done a lot of work on what could be a great idea, so kind of keeping all, juggling all of those opportunities right now.
So we don't need a motion to go forward, but we're going to go forward. I think that's the sense of, of the group, and the one piece of new business here is the suggestion that the Lions retain a consultant, subject to your approval, to explore the validity of the projected revenue stream.
Yep.
And then you'll continue to work, to massage the numbers, because we haven't even really done a, a detailed analysis of the cost, which we have to do to be, or have we? The, the cost that the Lions presented of the, the million dollars?
We have, we've taken it probably as far as we can on the cost side without really getting involved in taking some soil samples and engaging consultants.
Yeah, and having said that, I recognize Chuck, you, you, this isn't the first time you've done this, and along with Al, Al Orson, so...
...very positive, so I'm not, not scared about this at all. Continuing to work with the Lions group is really what we need to do. I've been involved in probably 20 bonds, and we have never been as prepared. I mean, ice, ice rinks are always going out for bonds, never prepared like we are right now at this point with this group, and we have consultants that are already donating time towards this project that have worked with me for years, that said, yeah, no problem, don't worry about it. So I, we just need to sit down, I, I agree, I think we need to sit down and bring in someone that looks at these numbers. These numbers were put together so that we could be at this meeting today to hear the positivity that's coming on both sides here. Partnering on this is great. Most of you know I've retired and I'm moving. If not, I'm moving into Wisconsin, but I've been told that I'm going to continue to be a Lion in Victoria until I'm satisfied.
Who authorized that move? Who authorized that move?
The family.
Enough said.
So, no, I'm, I, I came in today hoping that we would hear some positive, and I'm hearing more positive than I thought we would, so it's good. And I'm proud to be a member of the Victoria Lions and I'm proud to be a member of the Victoria community right now, thank you.
For the record, did Chuck Freiberg, Lion and Architect, retired?
Well, I'm retired, 40 years of architecture.
More than a few significant structures.
And I make that footnote about, with respect to some of the, the projections and costs and some of the professionalism that's gone into the preparation to this point. So, again, thank you.
Anything else, and if nothing, we'll move on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Chuck and Dave. New business, Laketown rezoning, the first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Tonight, you have before you a request for rezoning from Lennar for a portion of property that they own in Laketown. One of the things I've tried to do as we've gone through this prob, process is just identify kind of where we stand today and kind of what the next steps would be. So tonight, in red, we have the first reading of the zoning change, and I just wanted to highlight, just because I don't think we've done that previously, what the options of council are, so that any residents in attendance also understand kind of what, what ability, what's on the table for consideration tonight, so to speak. So the council has the ability to approve the first reading. If for some reason there was not sufficient enough information provided at the meeting, you could act to table it for a future meeting date, to gather that information, have it presented at a, at a future meeting date, whenever that may be, and then act on it at that meeting, or you could, of course, deny approval of the first reading if that came to be an option that you weren't comfortable with what was provided, or what the general request had been. The one thing that I'd point out there, just so that it's clear, if you do deny, instead of tabling for additional information, that application cannot be re-brought back as a request of the council for another six months. So whether that's at the first reading or the second reading, denying a zoning request does basically table any action on a particular development for six months at a minimum.
But what we're doing tonight is approving the zoning change in the PUD design standards.
That, that is the option that's on the table tonight, yes.
Preliminary?
After, after tonight, the next meeting on the 26th, you'd have the second reading that is also at the same time that the council would hold a public hearing on this meeting. Should the zoning change pass, then the council would have the ability to consider approval of the preliminary plat, so that both of those things would be at the May 26th agenda, provided that the first reading of the zoning change being requested tonight gets approved.
Again, tonight, that's all we're doing is, being asked to approve.
Right, it's strictly related to zoning. So the request before you, this item just kind of identifies the difference, if you will, of what's being requested. The blue outline that covers the entire parcel, well, the majority of the parcel owned by Lennar is where the zoning change is being requested. This is the area of additional single-family expansion to Laketown neighborhood. There's one parcel here, if you can see where my cursor is, that was brought up in the sketch plat timeframe as being an area of townhomes that's been in the concept, so that is not under consideration tonight. Tonight, we're just looking at zoning change related to additional single-family being on property owned by Lennar as an addition or extension of the Laketown ninth edition.
Is there a reason why that's not being included, Ben?
Just because our underlying zoning, so our, in Victoria, our planned unit development is an overlay district. Anything that's done that's not specifically called out in the overlay defaults the underlying. In this case, the request is changed from ag to residential. Townhomes would be more appropriate in our multifamily zoning designation, and should the market change and we come up with a different plan further down the road, maybe that comes back in as single-family or another type of residential that, at this point in time, Lennar isn't comfortable committing to it just being single-family. And I would say that the city's interest would also be to kind of explore whether that townhome option is still viable or not.
So the fact that it's not included tonight is not a statement by Lennar that they don't want to go ahead with multifamily?
Correct. It's simply that, as was brought up at the sketch plat discussion, they kind of had a tiered or phased approach to the remaining property they own. The preliminary plat that will be under consideration at the next meeting is really consistent with that initial phase that they had outlined in their sketch plat. The townhomes were kind of the last or final phase of what they had planned to do with the property that they own.
And so from what you're seeing going forward here, the process is, is going forward as you've seen or as, as been outlined?
As has been presented to the city, yes.
Okay.
So as a, as a comparison, just so we understand kind of what this request means for the remaining expansion of Laketown, I've identified on the left kind of the existing conditions, both in the first through seventh additions. Recognize that some of those first through seventh additions were also townhomes, so this is more the single-family components of the, those initial phases, as well as the eighth addition for what they have from a zoning perspective for setbacks and general lot configuration characteristics, and then on the right showing what is being requested of you tonight. One of the things that I would point out specifically that's unique to the ninth edition that was not done in previous editions is there are 11 lots shown in the initial phase of development that are requesting a 25-foot front yard setback, and I'll show you where those are. Throughout the entire process of, you know, talking with the neighborhood and trying to address some of their concerns, there's a lot of discussion around consistency and having the ability for whether it was consistent houses or just general characteristics of the neighborhood they wanted to keep. Lennar had their civil engineer basically test all of the initial lots that are being proposed to see what kind of parameters they could work from as far as the amount of, amount or type of certain housing that they offer throughout the development, what that could be. 11 of those sites needed to have an additional five feet to accommodate the full range of what they offer from house styles. So whether that's the, the landmark series, which is home styles that are in the eighth edition currently, the classic series, which was built out partially in the first edition, it's also been built in Victoria in the Rhapsody development. They have some Rambler floor plans that in some cases could fit on, in certain lots in the development, as well as their next-gen home that kind of has the mother-in-law suite, for a lack of a better term, that are just different housing varieties that could be accomplished throughout the development. And I can show you in the next slide where those are. Everything else is fairly consistent with what has been done in previous versions from a zoning perspective. So I would say overall, what the request is, is very, it's going to blend well with the existing neighborhood. So this is the PUD development plan. You'll see this again as kind of the preliminary plat, because for how these evolve when you do a PUD, the exhibits end up being identical. If we dig a little bit deeper on, this just graphically represents where the lots showing that zoning classifications are in relation to existing conditions. If you get into the specifics of areas of the plan, all the lots shown in green, so you can see this lot here, we have four lots kind of at the end of this cul-de-sac. If I go to the next page, you have one lot on the, a new street, and then five on the south side of Lakeside Drive. Those are the 11 lots throughout the development that are proposed for the reduced front yard setback, and then again, that is being requested to achieve a 65-foot building pad, which is very large considering it's not generally tested in most developments that are proposed to the city. None of those reduced front yard setbacks are next to any existing lots either, so you won't see a change in kind of that street frontage up and down any of the existing This graphic has been shown in a couple recent meetings, both the neighborhood meeting and the last planning commission meeting, just shows what had been shown from a concept perspective with the initial first phase of the plan and then kind of what you're seeing tonight. So what I won't talk too much about tonight, because they relate more to the plat, there's been some reconfiguration of lots primarily due to existing natural features, primarily wetlands, that have kind of constrained what can be done. So you do see some variation in lot sizes, but for the most part, the areas adjacent to existing lots have remained consistent in size with what exists today, and there have been smaller lots that are incorporated in generally similar areas to what had been contemplated with the original concept.
Ben, can you also remind us how many single-family and multifamily or townhome, I shouldn't say multifamily, but townhome units were planned in the original concept?
If I have it spelled out, I would love to do that for you.
It was 300 something, wasn't it?
Yeah, that sounds familiar.
It was 302, I think.
There are just a little over 90 existing single-family homes in the first through seventh edition, and another 43 that were in the eighth, so we're basically doubling the amount of single-family into the neighborhood.
Yeah, and I'm actually thinking specifically about the area under consideration tonight, what was originally planned for that specific, for this last, this ninth phase versus...
It was, everything under consideration tonight has always been shown as single-family, so there's no change from a land use perspective as to what's being represented previously to what's under consideration tonight.
And what about quantity?
I would say for the area shown in this graphic, there might be an additional 11 lots that are shown, which is generally easy to accomplish when you talk about cul-de-sacs versus through streets, because you reduce the amount of intersections in street areas, so you generally can gain additional lots from doing that.
Thank you.
Anything else, Ben?
I don't, other than staff would recommend passing the first reading.
Why don't you just recount for us the number of formal contacts you've had with the neighborhood, the numbers of open houses, neighborhood meetings?
Including the sketch plat phase, we've had two neighborhood meetings with whoever was able to attend those. Part of the discussion from the sketch plat really centered around parkland dedication. Anne and I had a special mini neighborhood meeting... Anne and I had a special mini neighborhood meeting with some residents on Carriage as we were exploring the possibility of putting park ground adjacent to eight homes on Carriage Drive. Then I've had fairly regular correspondence with residents and an email group that was set up for many of those that had attended and provided that email through any of those avenues.
Any other questions for Joe?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Ben, if we approve this tonight, are we approving the locations of the lots?
Tonight, you are simply approving the zoning for the development. You're not approving the preliminary plat.
Okay, so the side yard setbacks, the, that's...
That, side yard setbacks are part of the zoning. That's what's under consideration. So if you wanted to summarize it, you would basically be saying this is okay with moving forward to the second reading.
But the locations of the buildings could be changed? The location of the park could be moved, the...
It could be if it wasn't for the fact that we've also had a preliminary plat application submitted at the same time. So from how this has gone forward, that plan use development plan does start to define where those lots will be located.
Okay, and as I understand it, that there's still, the neighborhood isn't too excited about the layout? And so I'm wondering how we can come to a better resolution or at least allow the residents to speak their mind before we would approve this? Because what I don't want to do is approve it and now the, you know, the wishes of the residents in that neighborhood, they're, why even bother to show up? Because we've already picked where the lots are and the sizes and, you know, now the only thing they have to complain about is the color of the homes.
So, can I interrupt?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, just as a follow-up, I actually did have a meeting with Ben here recently because I know there was a lot of concern even after. We called a second neighborhood meeting after our last discussion at the sketch plat was presented to us. And since then, Ben and the staff has been extremely busy trying to bring Lennar, the HOA boards together, neighborhoods together, having conversations, managing communication back and forth. And there's been a number of, I guess I would say, as I read even in here tonight, a number of things where we've been successful in helping to facilitate a conversation or a shift in thinking. So one of the examples would be the ability to choose different styles of housing, the classic, the rambler style, et cetera. That was originally not on the table. It's now on the table because of the conversations staff has been trying to have Lennar have along with the residents. Park and Rex did actually make a recommendation for a different location for the playground. So it's not on Carriage Drive behind the houses. Those are gone. I know the residents still have concern over trails there, but at least the playground is no longer going to be going into that situation. There is also conversation that'll be happening with HOA and Lennar to try and involve. So I, I guess, long and short of it is a lot of the things that have been brought up by the residents, staff is doing what they can and all that they can to facilitate the appropriate conversations in that since we cannot dictate Lennar's, some specific pieces around Lennar. We can certainly talk about the zoning, the PUD development requirements that we have, but beyond that, we can't tell them you can only build the style of house or et cetera and some other pieces. So we're working within the realm of what we can. And I would have to say that the amount of work been done is, is pretty significant. We are not sitting back and just letting it roll forward from a Lennar point of view, I'm sure. But Ben and staff has been working very hard on it. So certainly there can be more conversation, but I do know it's continuing and hasn't stopped.
The only other thing I'd throw out to answer your question, Joe, is that we did have the public hearing on the preliminary plat with the planning commission at the last planning commission meeting. I don't know that there have been any significantly, significantly new items that have been brought up throughout the course of what we've been working through. But we have tried to address where we can, any of the issues that have been brought up. And then we also have the public hearing on the zoning change at the next meeting. And council can certainly take any additional input that's brought forward at that meeting to consider. And, you know, the ordinance being proposed could be amended prior to being adopting, adopted at that second reading. There could also be things that are further considered as part of the preliminary plat that would be available to be considered after the zoning were to pass if that's the will of the council.
I'd like to compliment Ben and staff for the work they've put into this. They have done a tremendous job in helping facilitate the communications, sometimes very difficult between some residents and the builder. And you guys have done a great job. I'd like to comment that to state that the residents of Lake Town have concerns is an overly broad generalization. I'm a resident of Lake Town. There are some residents that have concerns. And that's what staff has been working on. But to state that the entire, or to have it come across as if it's the entire neighborhood is incorrect.
It's also possible that some wishes or desires or needs of some residents simply can't be met. And we have to recognize that the owner of the property has a certain, have certain rights. And that's why, when I asked you earlier, the number of meetings that you've, you've, you've had with, I mean, there are, how many substantial meetings where you've had, where you had a broad audience? How many would you say you've had?
Six, seven.
Yeah, I mean, at some point, you've gone, you've gone as far as you feel you can appropriately go and the residents, if they're not happy, they're not happy. And you certainly have winnowed the list of issues down from a, I don't know if you ever kept count, kept track, but I know it was, there's been some substantial revisions to the plan. And I, I mean, again, I commend you.
Well, I, Mr. Mayor and council members, I understand that not everyone in the neighborhood dislikes the plan. I apologize for that misstatement, but I'm extremely uncomfortable. If we, we know that there are more than one resident there that is unhappy with it and for us to approve this plan without giving them at least the opportunity or the common courtesy to come in and speak their mind on what they think, it's not right. I don't understand why we are approving this development.
We're not approving the development tonight.
We just said, though, that we're approving the lot sizes, the lot locations.
Which are not...
What else are we going to discuss?
Not locations, it's just the size.
And, and I would clarify, tonight is just the first reading of the zoning change. You don't enable the zoning to take place until after the second reading, after the public hearing.
Public hearing.
Putting it on final passage.
So then if the residents would like to come and speak about the new development, that the next meeting is their chance to sway the elected officials' minds?
The next meeting, throughout now, through the next meeting, they have been contacting us. I know they've been contacting Ben and working with him on a number of things as well. So again, if we need to hold another meeting, we can, but there is one already scheduled to come up. And I would just again encourage the conversation to continue as it already has throughout, even since we've had some additional meetings beyond what we normally would have for this kind of situation.
Just to be clear, the council is not moving ahead without any conversations with the residents. There have been, of the developments that we've approved in the last, oh, my four years, the conversation that has occurred in this process has been, it has been a wonderful process. It has been way above what has occurred with any other development, including those that have had some controversy. So to say that we're not giving them an opportunity to speak, I think we've been, there's been many opportunities to speak and there will continue to be opportunities to speak.
Well, I agree that they have had opportunity to speak to us in private, but I would like to have them come in and talk on the record.
How many public meetings have we had on this, Ben?
Neighborhood meetings?
Neighborhood meetings, where they've gotten together and come to council. The last one was one, for sure.
You had some additional meetings also beyond the...
Six that I would say were open to anyone to attend. Where we didn't have, like the meeting that I talked about, Anne and I attended, we did target specific residents because we were most concerned with what they had to say about the potential of a playground going in their backyard, so to speak. But otherwise, there have been six to date. And then there would be another meeting at the, the next city council meeting.
And just, how many city council members were there at those meetings?
Two of the meetings I'm talking about are tonight and the previous city council meeting at the sketch plat.
So two then, where decision makers were there and not six?
Correct.
Okay.
So as we, you know, again, I hear a lot of community engagement. That's something I think as a council, we've worked to increase over the last, you know, I guess I'll speak for my time here, four years, kind of broadening the area that gets notified, creating more clarity to what the process is. And, you know, and I, I see that continuing here. From my perspective, you know, it would be, it would be interesting to see kind of the list of the issues and how they've been remedied and sort of what are the outstanding issues? What are the, the key things that we expect to hear at, at the next reading of the ordinance and the, and the public hearing? And I would also like to understand, and, you know, I was kind of on this path with, you know, how many lots are there now versus the original proposal? Because, you know, there is a balance here and, and there is property rights to, to the owner of the property, acting within our ordinances and acting within the original proposal that they put forward to the city, you know, ten years ago, twelve years ago, and had approved. And so to the degree that we look at changes, I'd like to understand how much of this is really unique or how much of this has sort of been the intent from the beginning? And there are a couple of things, you know, from my perspective, that have popped up kind of as repeat themes. One is, you know, the side yard setbacks, whether it's ten and fifteen or just a straight ten. The houses that face Carriage versus the side streets over closer to the Deer Run end. And, and of course, the park was a big one, but, you know, that seems to have moved in a more positive direction. So those are some of the things that I would like to make sure we understand, you know, what we're going to hear and, and what the process will be to, you know, I guess, driving to either a, a change or an acceptance of decision on those, on those points.
I think it's also important that we recognize that at the end of the day, it's not possible probably to please everybody. And the owner of the property has certain rights, acting within the appropriate boundaries of our zoning ordinance. And if someone doesn't like a trail where a trail is proposed to go, and yet that's in your judgment and in the judgment of the planning commission and other professionals have looked at it, that that's where the trail ought to be, the discussion has to end where we, I think, where we agree to disagree. Anything else? I'll make a motion to approve, to approve the first reading of the zoning change from ag to residential and PUD plan unit development standards for Lake Town addition, ninth addition in title only.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nothing. The 2040 housing plan.
So I'll try to be brief on this.
This is guaranteed to excite.
Yes, riveting conversation is my goal. The Metropolitan Council has released a 2040 housing policy plan that's intended to identify housing allocations for all the communities in the Seven County metro area, has implementation benchmarks and housing performance scoring in it. I reviewed the draft amendment that's been out. Public comment ends this Friday, May fifteenth. So I put a letter together that I think starts to identify the, the key things that would relate to Victoria specifically, understanding that we have another, number of other jurisdictions or partners that are also submitting letters as well, primarily from our standpoint. Carver County has submitted a letter already outlining some more specific concerns they have with how the proposed housing policy plan would impact them, as well as the Carver County CDA having a slightly different twist on how this policy plan impacts them. And we do know of a number of other communities, our neighbors basically, that will be submitting letters from their, on their own behabs. But I'd just like to kind of give a brief overview of what's in that housing policy plan and kind of what some of the concerns were that, are that were identified in that letter. So really, the key objectives of the housing policy plan, they've worked, the Met Council has worked hard to identify a formula that they thought would fairly allocate affordable housing throughout the metropolitan area. Some of those three key factors that I've listed on there were taken into context with that formula. The number of existing housing that's deemed to be affordable as a metro standard, available transit that might be close to where those allocations are made, and proximity of low-paying jobs to be close to where affordable housing should be. Probably the biggest thing that isn't spoken directly to in that letter is, how do we achieve or how do we show that we're getting towards some of these allocation letters, levels? So the housing policy plan was sent out as a framework to guide jurisdictions that fall within that Seven County metro in their upcoming comprehensive plan updates. So in our comprehensive plan update, 2018 is kind of the deadline for having that done. We'll have to show how we're moving towards guiding land use and having specific mechanisms in place to achieve any of the allocations that we were provided. And then there's also details in this housing policy plan for our housing performance score and to not get into the weeds on kind of what that is and what all is involved in it. In short, any funding requests that, you know, the city, the county, any of our partners that we may go in with on transportation or housing projects, it all relates back to this housing performance score. So if we don't score highly on the housing performance score, we don't stand a good likelihood of receiving funding through the Metropolitan Council. And if you want to digest the graphic on the, the right sum, that's basically how the, the formula has been put together. So they basically said, as a region, we need X amount of affordable units. Then to break it down on, at a community level, they said, here's kind of the amount of affordable housing each community should provide. And then they've put these adjustment factors in, weighted probably more strongly on the amount of existing affordable housing stock in a community. And then also tried to include the other factors that relate to, kind of the market providing for affordable housing, which would be the availability of low-wage jobs and proximity to transit. And then your total allocation is also broken down into three tiers. So you have your range from fifty-one to eighty percent of AMI. The eighty percent AMI is roughly sixty-four thousand nine hundred dollars, I think, for our...
AMI is area median income?
Correct. And then you have the thirty-one to fifty and your thirty percent or less of AMI. And you can see what our projected numbers are based on this draft. I would also note that while this housing policy plan is out, there's also a, a transportation plan that's already been approved by the Metropolitan Council. There are projected population counts that are out for review right now. Basically, what they're hoping to achieve by adopting this housing policy plan is having the framework of how allocation would be made. So if our housing, if our population projections trend up, it stands to reason that the amount of housing allocated to us would also raise accordingly. These are two maps that were included in the policy plan. The, the map on the left shows... The, the map on the left shows basically how different communities in the region, uh, score with regards to the amount of existing, uh, affordable housing units. Everything in kind of the brighter orange is at the low end of the spectrum from the amount of existing affordable units. The dark blue would have probably higher levels. And then the image on the right is the presence of low wage workers and low wage jobs. And in this case, orange identifies higher levels and the blue represents lower levels. So what I've tried to articulate in the letter is that we've even talked, you know, the council through the strategic plan that housing diversity is certainly something we're aware of, that we need to provide kind of what's best for our community. But to have a formula that skews some of the other factors, um, that make the market attainable for achieving some of the more affordable units in our community, doesn't seem like the best approach to reflect kind of our present conditions. So that's why and how the letter was worded that way. And then from a comprehensive plan update standpoint, these are the tools, um, in short, that you have to start to meet the allocation levels. So we can either guide sufficient land to meet whatever that projected number ends up being once we go through the updated population counts. We can guide, um, land at eight units per acre, um, as just across the board to achieve the number of units in that area. Or we can do a combination of guiding density at 12 units per acre to meet our 50% or greater. Or, excuse me, 50% or less, or we can guide some, um, also at six units per acre to meet the 51 to 80% AMI.
You know, this, this formula has the implied precision that an academic would love. It just, let me make sure I understand this. We don't have low paying jobs. We don't have a transportation system that would accommodate lower income workers. So let's build the houses.
And we're also not extremely close to low paying jobs.
Yeah, if I understood those two maps, the previous slide, it says the jobs are everywhere else, so let's build the houses where they're not.
Yes. And you penalize it. It's been said, when you look at the skewing of the, of the formula, if you don't have a lot of low income housing, you're going to get tasked with building more to catch up.
So let me, let me see if I understand what this building housing means. Are they suggesting that the city get out the checkbook and actually buy the land and construct the houses? And hope somebody shows up to buy them?
That would be a fair assumption of what is being brought.
And in fact, they're, they're standing ready to, to provide to certain cities, certain jurisdictions, additional funds to make that happen. We just happen to be so blessed.
Well, and if you tie back to what I was very briefly talking about, the housing score, we wouldn't fare well under this scenario in having a high housing performance score. Therefore, we would not stand a good likelihood of achieving, achieving funding towards a housing project.
So is just the, uh, let's just play this forward. Let's say we buy the land and we build the houses and nobody moves in. Is, did we accomplish the goal? Because they're there or does somebody actually have to inhabit them and?
From the standpoint that we provided the available units, we would have achieved that goal.
We would have achieved the goal.
Okay.
Now that we have acres of land sitting unusable, unusable for any other purpose, if they don't move there, that's a whole nother issue.
I guess I challenge the goal then at that point, um, whether that makes sense.
I mean, you touched on the 2018 and the comprehensive plan update. You might talk about that process. I mean, we, we have to guide.
Yeah. So as part of doing our comprehensive plan update, we'll have a specific section in our new comprehensive plan or our amended comprehensive plan that deals with housing strategy. And we'll have to specifically articulate what tools are available to us, whether that be, you know, the city paying towards a portion of affordable housing. Guiding land use is just one of those tools. If we have partnerships like with the, the CDA available to us to work in kind of collaboration on meeting some of those objectives. And if there's any other funding mechanisms or other partnerships, um, that can be used, we'll have to articulate that in our comprehensive plan update, just to show that we have a necessary framework available to us. I, I don't know that there is any specific penalty for achieving the specific numbers that have been shown to us to date. But in a sense, we have to prove that our mechanisms are in place, that we could achieve those numbers.
We'd have to designate property that would be so designated for low income housing.
Under the terms of what this housing policy plan identifies. It does say, for instance, if you guide property at 12 units per acre, you get say a, a high end housing or condominium project or something, whatever a luxury condominium, uh, project may be, I think is the wording that's in the policy plan. That's still diversifying the housing options in your community. But you're not necessarily achieving the affordability clause. So you're, you're achieving kind of half.
So let me make sure I understand this. We're going to be penalized for not following market demands and will be rewarded for attempting to change the market to something that nobody wants to buy.
Or nobody can get to.
We will be challenged to do that, yes.
That makes perfect sense.
Ben, is there anything in that plan, um, about me moving to Lake Minnetaka? Because I really want to live on Lake Minnetaka. I can't afford it. And I'm hoping maybe that the city could pay for me to move to Lake Minnetaka. Is there anything in there about that?
There's not.
Only if your income is 50%. 30%.
In the, when Senator Ortman was here, she talked about, and actually it was, uh, and, uh, Randy Maluschnik too, talking about trying to get something together to at least have the Met Council be, uh, elected officials. What can we do to start addressing that more formally?
Did we not approve a resolution, a letter of support for that?
I, I don't know, but this is just ridiculous.
This is ridiculous, yeah.
And enough's enough.
Well, for what it's worth, um, the county, you know, strong letter to follow. The county issued a, a two-page document that we, we would all be proud of taking up the, the challenge on, on our behalf and on behalf of the other communities.
So sorry to be sarcastic, but what's the expected response of that letter and, and any letter that we write?
I don't know.
Mayor? A voice of reason?
Well, no, I, I, this is not my place, so disregard this as you see fit. Just having, uh, represented a number of cities that have, I now hear similar concerns about the direction of the Met Council. Uh, just one observation, I think this is a very good letter that Ben has written for you, uh, Mayor, to sign. Uh, the one thing I see is in the last paragraph, it's, "We would request further consideration of", which I've seen the Met Council reply to, "We've further considered" and the answer is no or something like that. So possibly making that stronger would be one way to force a response.
And we say we reject it?
Mayor and council, you can't say you reject it, but you could say either explain to us, give us some feedback on how you've reached the conclusion that you appear to have preliminarily reached. Or, and I think maybe I would advocate for this, you could say, rather than what you've proposed here, we, the city of Victoria would propose the following. In other words, and I, I wouldn't be able to say it, Ben would say it better, but, um, reducing the level of importance of one or more of those criteria or readjusting the level of importance. I think if you actually tell them what you think they should do, they're forced to react to that and respond to you.
You know, and the irony is this is one of our, our objectives for the near term. One of our strategic objectives is to increase the diversity of our housing, but this is just, I mean, a heavy-handed instrument.
Well, and it's without merit to demand or, or specific. Ben, do you, if, if a developer knocked on your door tomorrow with a proposal that met these guidelines, do we have a way and a place for them to, to, uh, execute that in Victoria?
We are just starting to get to some of the areas that have been guided by our comprehensive plan for higher density development.
They wouldn't be turned away?
No.
We'd listen to the merits of a proposal and?
We just have to get them here.
Like the 13 and a half acres is so designated, isn't it?
Part of what I pointed out in the letter is, you know, to date, our conditions haven't changed drastically since the previous studies had been done, that we haven't seen the market show a high number or even, you know, a small number of affordable units being proposed in our community to date.
Ben, I guess I feel like if this was a real gap, there would be an entrepreneurial type organization that would show up here and say, this is, this is what you need. I've got demand. I, we build it, they'll come. It's, it's the right time. It's the right place. And that's not occurring. Is that correct?
To date, I would say that hasn't, no.
And we've done a little bit of, we've tried to reach out to some of the respective suppliers of such product and so far haven't found anything that meets anybody's mutual desires.
So let me ask a question. What are the consequences if we don't follow through?
There haven't been any identified. That's why if you've seen the draft that, um, Carver County sent and also is incorporated in this letter, just asking for the council to identify what non-compliance would mean so that we understand that better.
So why, why wouldn't we just take the very southwest corner of our, uh, possible expansion in Lake Town? Designate that as the most dense place that we possibly can. And when we get there in 40 years, we'll talk about it. And there's nothing to say that, what are they going to do? Shut off our sewer?
You know what you proposed, Joe, is essentially what we've done over the last 10, 15 years. We probably.
Do it again.
This is our vision, fingers crossed maybe, but this is our vision and we're going to work toward it and here's how we're going to achieve it.
It's in the plan.
Let it happen. And if it doesn't happen, somebody else will be up here.
Right. But I mean, we don't, we don't get any funding from that council, do we? I mean, I'm pretty sure we're a community that gives in and never gets anything back.
Well, my understanding is we get access to the sewer and that's how they've identified it here as sewered communities, correct?
Correct.
So they can constrain demand that's actually driven by, or they can constrain development that's actually driven by market demand if we don't build the kind of stuff they think should be in Victoria. Is that correct?
Potentially, without knowing what any of the consequences are, like, I don't know how to answer that question accurately.
Now, one of the, one of the, uh, initial goals of Mr. Dunick or Duennick, however it's pronounced, the new chairman of the Met Council had set out was to visit all of the local communities. Has he, has he made his way around here? Have he, has he engaged anybody from Victoria or Carver County?
Yes, at the county, at the last Carver County leadership meeting, where all the mayors, administrators attended, there were 30, 40 people in the room. And he, he came and addressed the crowd and did an incredible job of, I almost said blowing smoke, but of, of, of articulating his, his approach, which he claimed would be much less heavy-handed than in the past. Deb, our aide, what was particularly troublesome to us was that the person who's designated for our district hasn't shown up yet. But you have a meeting?
She is scheduled to be with us here at the city council meeting on May 26th.
That'll be fun. So again, register our objection. Essentially postpone the day of reckoning. When we get to the 2018 update to the comprehensive plan, do what we've done. Again, assuming no drastic changes are affected by the, the weight of all of the counties, all the jurisdictions jumping in. And if that, if nothing changes, we create, carry your master at, at the words of finding areas that are designated for the more intense development and then putting it to bed. I mean, there's a part of us, I know up here I can hear Tom groaning. You, you don't want to be playing the game, but to a certain extent, they have a lot of cards on their side. And I'm not sure, I, my, my suggestion is we let Ben rethink the letter, part of the letter according to the suggestions that Bob made and we join the crowd along with our county and.
That may be the only approach forward, but it just upsets me that having to play the game. At, at what point do you just say no? And I don't know what no means at this point in time. It's just that.
Many years ago, wasn't it Lake Elmo that said no? And how'd that work out for them?
Well, Mayor and Council, I guess it was thinking about the ultimate, um, remedy for what the Met Council would see as a city's intransigence or disagreement. And you're right, Mayor, to point that out. Ultimately, it's non-approval of a city's comp plan update and then followed by potentially litigation over the city's failure to have an updated comp plan.
Not to mention shut off the sewers. So where we would like to build single-family homes, good luck.
Yeah. And, and you're right. In the, in the litigation, you're talking about that was the stick was absent an approved comp plan update. Um, there isn't an approved plan for sewer extension and that's the conflict that ended up in court.
And how do we win that?
Well, and Mayor and Council, I don't want to pretend for a second that this particular letter is the door to that, but I think the more often you can point out in no uncertain terms that you don't agree that the decision the Met Council is proposing to make is reasonable. They're, they are like you. They are a state agency that's subject to the legislature. They have to act reasonably, like you have to act reasonably. And so to the extent you can point out their decision-making isn't reasonable, it appears to be arbitrary. It does not impact this community fairly. You're setting the stage for potentially, oh goodness knows we don't want it, but a disagreement that blows up into something more than just a policy disagreement, a legal disagreement. The more often you can point out that you disagree that their action is reasonable, the, the more often you should do that.
Ben, you had some suggestions. I mean, tomorrow morning, I mean, we think that through a little bit more and then how you want to amend the, the tail, the tail end of the business. Let's see, we don't have the houses, so we're going to build, we've got to build the houses. We don't have the people and we don't have the transportation system.
We had the transportation, but they took it away because nobody used it.
Because nobody used it.
I just, I don't, you know, I'm sorry to restate the obvious, but I don't understand why the Met Council would think that it's a good goal to have to build housing stock where there's no demand for it and the fundamentals of what would create demand doesn't exist either.
That sounds like a good lead into the question of help us. We don't understand. Because that's what it comes down to.
So is there? If we look at the city of Victoria, the other cities within the county, the county, we all seem to have the same concerns. Do we need to have more discussion on that as a group?
Well, the county's already submitted their letter.
I understand that they've done it independently. I'm suggesting maybe we need to get together and act as one.
The Southwest Metro Metropolitan Council.
Yes. It needs to be coordinated.
Yeah.
Do we know if the other?
I know it hasn't been specifically brought like a council to council discussion, but we had discussion at the Carver County Leaders, the Carver County City and County Planners Meeting. I attend. We've brought it up on several occasions. So I think from staff's side of things, staying informed and, and letting everyone else know kind of our position and what we're working on.
I'm just thinking they're likely.
Talking about something more aggressive, more proactive rather than responsive or just an agreement or an understanding.
They're more likely to listen to the group of us as opposed to a bunch of individuals.
Well, they heard from the group of us verbally. And I think what you're maybe suggesting is something a little more, or newer time, more, more formal.
Yes.
Is there a unanimous within Carver County position or is there some support for what's?
I haven't heard from any community that didn't have some concern raised by the new policy.
So what money does the Met Council give out that a community would want to play ball? What do they give out?
Uh, they give money towards, uh, transportation projects. I mean, lately it's been more geared at kind of the, uh, light rail type things. Um, but they'd also give funding for like Southwest Transit. They could receive money through the Met Council and then there'd be similar, um, funding opportunities to what we would maybe partner with, uh, Carver County CDA on that if we had. we had a project, we were gonna meet certain affordability levels with a percentage of units, they would maybe help contribute towards seeing that project move forward.
And when does this letter do...
Friday. Friday is the close of the...
I think we go ahead with the letter, but I...
No, I was thinking if we had enough time to assemble Chaska, Chan, and I don't know if they... You don't know if they've submitted their letters yet, have you?
We would be on a similar schedule. Chan should be considering theirs tonight, Chaska should be considering theirs tomorrow. I don't know Carver's meeting schedule, there Tuesday also, but probably last week, but we're all on about the same schedule.
This means more work for staff, but what I'm suggesting is we continue with the letter, but like we're doing in all of our other activities, we will be the largest city by land area in Carver County. Let's take a leadership position and get the group together.
And you could make, even if it was just Chan and Chaska and maybe even McConney, get the... Make some calls in the morning and see if they've... One, if they've submitted or if they're willing to join a joint... Because we're willing to lead a joint effort, would they be willing to participate?
And I just want to clarify, I think for most people, the action will already be taken on the letter, but what I'm hearing is that we might like to propose some sort of a joint letter on global Met Council issues, or a joint meeting where we bring the city councils from several of those cities together, as they've done at the county board level with the four suburban counties, but not so much specific to this issue, but to talk about Met Council governance issues in general.
Other than amending this letter a little bit, I think in conclusion, I think you're right, we don't have time to do much to change the letter, but there certainly is an opportunity to assemble four or five cities if they're willing, in addition to the county.
Well, but I agree, but I also don't want... I mean, there's kind of two parts to this. One is, you know, assemble a broader coalition to address the widespread dissatisfaction with the council and its allowed, you know, intervention into our community, but, you know, step one is stop the advancement, right? So we've got an issue that's right in front of us right now that needs to have as much opposition organized against it as possible, and then, you know, we can work on shrinking the tumor.
Well, that, to a certain extent, that's already happened. The county's issued their letter, and I can give you a copy of it, it's pretty forceful. They don't agree, and they want some answers. I assume the other cities, if they haven't already submitted, are close to submitting. I mean, Laura, your suggestion, register the opposition here, and then plan a more strategic, thoughtful approach.
Yeah, I'm just suggesting that the other cities, while they may be receptive to changing, they may not be able, just as if Chaska called us tomorrow and asked us to make changes to what we've discussed here tonight, Ben and I wouldn't feel comfortable changing what we had discussed here. So on this particular letter, I'm anticipating everyone's gonna submit what they have talked about either tonight or tomorrow night or last Tuesday, but we can definitely start the conversation, starting it here, but I don't want to give anyone the impression that we might influence anyone to change their response at this time.
Wouldn't expect that.
That's fair.
What do we need to do?
I'll start looking for houses on Lake Minnetonka.
And your Met Council subsidy.
As long as you're comfortable with the letter, and just amending the closing for some of the suggestions from our city attorney, you can do that and have it on the show tomorrow.
Yeah, we don't need a motion. Go right ahead.
Yep.
Yes, please.
The Bobcat purchase.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item for your consideration tonight is the purchase and lease of a new Bobcat on the state bid from Lano Equipment. Currently, the Public Works Department has one, basically buy-and-lease Bobcat that we have in the fleet right now, so every year, we get a new Bobcat. We trade the old one in, get a new one roughly for about $4,000 a year. We also rent one for about six months during the year because we utilize it for snow plowing, significant amount of time for snow plowing, especially in the downtown trails and parking lot areas, so we're spending about $6,000 a year just on the rental of that piece of equipment. So the proposal tonight is to purchase a second Bobcat, and then put that on the same program as the existing one. We kind of looked at the costs associated with that program versus an outright purchase, and keeping it on, for example, a ten-year schedule, and roughly, we'd be looking at saving, you know, roughly about $14,000 over the life of the Bobcat. In addition, we'd be looking at saving another $6,000 annually without having the rental equipment, and having it actually on fleet or in the fleet, so it really is an excellent program. One of the... Several of the advantages include, you know, we don't have the annual maintenance on it or the continued maintenance on it. After one year, we get it in, we do the oil changes, ship it back to the dealer, get a brand-new piece of equipment in. The tires alone on a piece of equipment like this, which require annual tires on it, roughly are in that $1,500 to $1,800 range because of the wear and tear that we put on them, especially the rental when we have that one for six months, so overall, we're saving significant maintenance costs. We also have the one-year warranty piece that just continues in the event that something were to happen to that piece of equipment, it would still be under warranty basically constantly, so. The 2015 CIP has $35,000 budgeted for the purchase of a new Bobcat. It did come in a little bit over about $1,600, and we do have other items that have come in under budget that would help pay for or offset the cost of the purchase of this new Bobcat, so. With that, staff is recommending the purchase and lease of a new Bobcat from state bid from Lano Equipment, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about it.
Counsel? I'll make a motion to authorize the purchase and lease of a new S650 Bobcat on state contract from Lano Equipment for $36,470.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Anne, go ahead.
Go ahead, Jim.
Anne, is... If we look at the CIP remaining for the 2015 year, is this your number-one priority, or are there other things that you would rather have or need?
This, actually, I'm from a cost perspective. I think this one is very high on the list because I think we're wasting a lot of money from the rental of it. The only item that I really have left is the excavator for stormwater, so we're looking at options with that. We did have another mower in, small mower in the CIP that we're looking at not purchasing and carrying forward, so.
Are there options for that excavator that are available to you if you did not purchase this?
That would be greater.
Yeah, does it limit your...
No.
...options on the excavator?
No.
All right.
We've anticipated a certain budget amount for that as well, so.
As I... Obviously, there's a lot of ins and outs, and I appreciate the information that's been assembled and presented here. You know, when I think about kind of different scenarios, you know, range of expenses, range of options, you know, I think, you know, the kind of information that the Lions put together, we've got four different scenarios that look at different cash flows. I would like to see that kind of analysis done here in terms of the kind of the lease versus buy, the keep and hold versus and maintain versus, you know, refresh every year, to see it kind of laid out numerically. You know, the explanation is good, but kind of the financial analysis piece of it laid out numerically would make it a lot easier for me to say, "Yeah, this makes sense."
Is it as simple as we're spending six and we could spend four?
Correct, and it is one of the pieces of equipment that we use year-round with many of the projects that we do, many of our required maintenance that we do. You know, it's one of the costs of doing businesses with the city, so I view it as, yes, we're spending six, we could be spending two.
Four.
Or four, sorry, four. We could certainly purchase it, but based on quick analysis of maintenance cost, warranty, you know, this program has really benefited us just from not having those maintenance costs continually as we use this equipment, so we're kind of just getting a new one in and not having to worry about any maintenance costs associated with it at $4,000 a year.
So I understand the cost benefit there, but the cost is not being considered, or it's not, I think, to paraphrase what I heard, Councilmember Striegel state, there is an outlay of cash, and we're tying up a set of $36,000 worth of cash in order to gain that benefit, so we are having to spend money to do that, and it's that type of an analysis, I think, including that entire cash flow, is what's important.
And I think that Kelly has incorporated this into the financial plan with the CIP items.
Correct.
We do have this in the CIP, and then ongoing maintenance to have the additional Bobcat.
Yeah, I guess the point I'm trying to make is I can spend $100,000 and save a ton of money, but I still spend $100,000. I want to make sure that we have to spend that.
Do I understand correctly that we only have one Bobcat, or we have one in this program right now?
We have one Bobcat in the program right now, and then we rent another Bobcat for about six months out of the year.
So we have one and a half skid steer loaders for the entire city for everything that your team does that requires that kind of equipment. Is that correct?
We have one for an entire year, yep, two for six months.
And how many hours a year get put on the one that we own or that we have in this program?
We try to maintain or to try to keep it to 200 hours for the rental, actually for both of them, because you get a higher price when you trade it back in. I know a couple of years ago, when we had all that snow, we put close to 350 hours on it just from snow removal that bad winter.
So that's, you know, nominally 200 hours, four hours a week. It seems odd to me that we have a machine that's being used four hours a week, and we need to buy another one.
Does the average get in the way of that analysis? And when you need it, you need two of them.
To maintain the downtown sidewalks and...
And maybe during the summer, you're not using any of them at all, or...
At times, but it is getting is quite a bit. We use it for storm... It's somewhat of a specialty piece of equipment besides the downtown area and the snow removal, but we do use it for all the sidewalks. We've got, you know, 18 miles of sidewalk and trail that we do, the rec center downtown, you know, so we send out two people on those, both those machines in order to get downtown done, so businesses can get back in, and then we're moving right out onto trails with them and parking lots.
You know, Tom raises a good point. In so much of what we analyze financially, we... There's considerable detail associated with it, and this may be a victim of spend four or spend six, we save two, it's... That's an easy decision, but I think he raises a good point. There's behind all that, there's some moving pieces that would be helpful in order to make an intelligent decision, and in the future, I think you want to try to capture as many of those as you can. I mean, make it a full-blown lease purchase, lease-buy analysis. I mean, you do these routinely, it's not a matter of anything consequential or complicated.
Does it make sense to table this motion and bring back the financial analysis for consideration at the next meeting?
I'd support that.
Well, if the two of you support it, I'll support it as well.
Is there any...
You made the initial motion, do we need to...
I withdraw my motion.
May I ask a question before we proceed, or do you want to make a motion and then...
No, I just withdrew my motion, so go ahead, Lon, the floor.
I think the only question I would have for Anne is, is there a timing issue with the estimate or anything that you got for the next one?
Yes, there will be. There will. The cost will be impacted by delays, so.
A two-week delay?
Yes, because now it won't be until June, so we'll be paying another... Yeah, there will be some financial implications, not much, but there will be.
What would we gain by delaying it two weeks, and a clearer picture of the details?
The details and the appropriateness of the expense. Again, it's 40,000 or 36,000 out of pocket to save two.
So what is involved here then is some justification for the need for two Bobcats?
Can I clarify? I think, is the question really, we use two presently, we can continue to lease the second piece of equipment and purchase one. I think Councilmember Striegel said, should we spend 36,000 out of pocket to save 2,000 a year? That's the statement that we would be following up on, correct?
Correct.
So what would drive the... A two-week delay, what would be the... What happens in that two weeks that has a financial impact, that drives the cost? Are we currently renting this time?
Yes, yes, so that'll... That will put it out for another basically a month, so it will reduce the cost of the value of what we would purchase it for, if that makes sense. But it will be minimal. I mean, it'd be...
I don't understand.
A couple hundred dollars.
So we're buying something, but we have nothing to trade in because it's a rental.
Correct, but the...
So how does delaying this affect the cost?
We currently have the rental, so we'd be purchasing that, basically a new Bobcat, so that's our... That will reduce our value when we go to trade back in, or it actually holds the value, but we'll be paying for another month of a rental on the piece of equipment.
When would we normally turn in that rental?
Usually in the... Usually in the spring, and we'll pick it up again in the fall. So we'd keep the one we'd rent right now, so...
I'm still confused, so I thought I heard you say that we normally turn it back in in the spring, so we wouldn't be renting it right now anyway.
Correct, we still have it. It's the timing of it, so we intended to...
So we need to turn that thing in?
Right, yes, we do need to turn it back in.
Why do we still have it if we normally turn it in? There's... We're missing something.
Yeah, no, we turn them in in the spring, which is about now, but it's about the same time, so we've just still got it.
I'm actually a little more troubled by something I think I just heard, which is that we're gonna pay $36,000 to buy a machine that we've been using for six months. Is that correct?
Yes, less than 200 hours on it. Otherwise, we'd be paying 42,000 or 40,000 for it, so we're reducing the value or reducing the cost of the vehicle by $4,000 by keeping the one that we're already renting.
So that will turn that into that lease.
Correct.
That then will trade out every year.
Correct. Otherwise, purchasing brand-new is gonna run at about $40,000, so 4,000 more than what we would currently pay for that machine right now.
So what would you pay on the open market for a used Bobcat with 200 hours on it?
Probably about... It'd be in the same price range, 36 to 40,000, but it's... This is state contract bid too, so it probably would end up costing more going out to another dealer.
And going through a state contractor?
Yes.
And if I hear you correctly, one of the advantages of this program is the warranty on it is good for the time we... And if I hear you correctly, one of the advantages of this program is the, the warranty on it is good for the time we own it because we're gonna turn it in in a year and get the next version or the next Bobcat.
Correct.
And so the warranty stays all the way through. We never, we never.
Lose a warranty.
Lose the warranty in this program.
Correct.
What I'm hearing is there's some more math that needs to be done. So, can we table this? I'll move to table it till next meeting?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We are tabled the purchase of the, of the next meeting. Reports of the city manager.
Thank you. We will gather here again next Monday, May 18th at 5:30 for an Urban Land Institute workshop. We've talked about this quite a bit as a component of the strategic plan and, uh, information gathering this year. Uh, for those that haven't been exposed to what we're doing, we're gonna be working with the Urban Land Institute to do a workshop called Navigating Our Competitive Future. We will have a panel of four volunteer real estate professionals that will be here. The city council, planning commission, and staff will be a part of the conversation with those panelists. We've invited any committee or commission members to attend. And it's also open to any members of the public that want to come and sit in and listen. Uh, there's, we're gonna have a dialogue that's gonna focus on three areas, economic reality, market preferences, and demographic preferences. Uh, we expect that workshop to last about two hours, uh, maybe a little bit longer. So we start here at 5:30 and, uh, we will have a light dinner at for about a frame of the participants that can come a little bit early. Uh, otherwise, we'll be here from about 5:30 to 7:30 next Monday for the Navigating Our Competitive Future workshop. I also want to make sure that anyone that loves to attend city council meetings, uh, recognizes that our second meeting in May will be on Tuesday evening because the fourth Monday is Memorial Day. Um, so we'll be here on May, Tuesday, May 27th instead of Monday night. Also wanted to let you know that earlier today, uh, very late in the day, Finance Director Kelly Grinnell received a request for a TIF payment from the owner of the grocery store. I really don't have specifics to share with you, um, but that'll be something we'll be bringing back to you for consideration at your May 27th meeting once we better understand the details of what that agreement, uh, either obligates us to or, uh, allows us to consider.
He's asking for a rebate that is at least technically due him from taxes paid in October.
Correct.
And he would normally get that rebate.
In February.
In February if he's in operation.
Right. Previous, go ahead.
I was just gonna say that the TIF agreement, as I understand it, was with Fresh Seasons Market and that legal entity no longer exists. So was the TIF agreement updated to reflect the new business?
It has not been, and I'm not, this call came in at, uh, about 4:10 today. I'm not well-versed enough in the details of that agreement to comment on that. I wanted to bring it up because I feel like you'll likely be approached between now and then. But we're gonna be doing all that research, working with our city attorney to figure out both where our obligations and our options are.
My understanding, based upon some questions that were asked previously, is that the TIF agreement is not with Fresh Seasons, it is with the owner of the building.
With the owner of the building.
Okay.
Which is Mr. Wortman. So.
And really, the only requirement he had was to maintain an operating business.
Correct.
To qualify for the rebate. Yeah, stand by, you will get a call.
Yeah, so Kelly and I will look into it. As I said, we'll come back with obligations and options. Nothing, no action to be taken tonight, but I wanted you to know we'd be working on that.
Okay, excuse me, and you'll get back to, to Tom, or have you already?
I have not, but I will.
Let me know if you'd like some help. Counsel, any, any comments? Bob, how about, do you have anything from you?
Well, Mayor and Council, uh, your city manager did mention to me a 10-second update on the Data Practices Act request might be appropriate. Um, you'll recall that we had a very broad request that I attempted to sort of narrow. I only mention that again because that goes to the timeline for responding. Obviously, a broader request takes longer to respond to than a more narrow request. You engaged a consulting firm to help with that and they've been helpful, Shepherd.
Data Services.
Data Services, thank you. Um, and I guess the, the, the short, uh, update is that Kennedy and Graven and Shepherd have rounded the corner. I think we're prepared to turn over the winnowed out, um, data that we received from council members, subject to the request. Uh, we've, we've winnowed that out and I think we're prepared to move it along through the process. And I don't have a firm date for when the final result will be available to the requesting parties, but that, uh, day is now in sight, so.
And what is the next step in that process? We get to review what you've identified?
Yes, uh, Mayor and Council, so as I said, broad request for all data by certain council members related to city business over a three-year period of time. Again, a very broad request. We've winnowed it down through that sieve as a first step. And then, uh, our office, um, as background, you'll recall that there are a very, very long list of kinds of data that, uh, are not public, are not things that folks are entitled to see because they relate to personnel matters, because they're attorney-client privileged, et cetera, et cetera. And so we've been winnowing then through the, the smaller group of data to take out confidential, uh, employee data, attorney-client privileged data, and other. And there are literally hundreds of categories of data that are potentially not public. We've been getting through that. The next step will then be to, to turn it back to the council members that are subject to the request so that you all know what the final, um, distilled, uh, result looks like. And then with that, uh, review, hand it off to the folks or make it available to the folks that have made those requests.
Roughly, how many documents are you talking, put a ballpark around?
Mayor and Council, I'll be wrong, so I don't want to not answer. I will answer, but, um, understand that I could be off by some factor. Um, it's in the hundreds. I think it's not going to reach thousands. Now, remember, the original data, um, this relates, uh, to two council members. I understand there's a request pointed at a third. I'm only talking about the two, the first two that came in, Mayor, you being one of them. The, the initial pile of data was very large, much larger than what we're talking about now. The, the final result is, I think, going to be in the hundreds, uh, not in the thousands of it, discrete pieces of data. And that's all I have, Mayor.
And I'm gonna resist making a comment.
I just, I was just gonna say, from an order of magnitude standpoint, I don't mind making a comment. And that is that, just to set the stage of what the order of magnitude is, I turned over seven and a half gigabytes of email. So that's two DVDs and I'm happy to do so. I thank you for your help to, uh, make sure that we submit what's appropriate.
Yeah, that, those comments, lest anyone wonder why it's taken so long.
Those of us maybe not familiar with how many gigabytes it takes to make it, uh, an email message, can you give us a rough count of how many messages would be included in that?
Over that timeframe, I turned over 74,000 emails.
So.
And it's a couple hundred that are, okay.
Anything else? It's pathetic. Um, this, uh, another reminder, but Discover Victoria Day Saturday, it's really important to the, to the people who participate in that, that elected leaders show up. So I'd urge everyone to, I'm bringing my grandkids, uh, anybody who wants to help me babysit, I'm wel- I'm willing to, to share that joy. But I, seriously, 10 to 2 this Saturday, the 16th, please come. It's, it's a worthwhile, just make an appearance and if you, if you, if you're preoccupied.
Victoria Rec Center?
Victoria Rec Center. Anything else? I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.